Good afternoon, I'm the City of Ocean Shores Planning Commission meeting. It is Tuesday, September 12th, 2023, 2:00 PM. We're at the Ocean Shores Library. Before we do the roll call, we have Larry Moser on. Wave at us, Larry. Larry will have to participate as a non-voting member until we can get him physically sworn in person whenever he comes back. So you understand that, Larry? Larry's a non-voting member, kind of listening in, and in two meetings he'll be back. He'll swear on it and he'll become a full voting member at that point. The other thing is Paul notified me that he picked up a full-time teaching position that happens to conflict with this, but he's working with the school and he's hopeful that they can work out, so we take the meetings. But for this time, do I have a motion to excuse Paul Schultz? Moved by Mark, seconded, seconded by Kerry. Yeah? Okay, all right, so over the rest of the roll call, for the very thin crowd we have left. Commissioner Berger here, Commissioner Ward.
Still here as a vital cog of the machine.
Commissioner Barr here. Commissioner Lawless here. All right, so. And we have as a non-voting attending Commissioner Moser on Zoom, so we're all set. He's not Commissioner Moser, Larry Moser, we haven't sworn yet. Okay, we'll do that. All right, do we have a motion to approve the meeting agenda? Mark, seconded, Kerry, all in favor? Make this easy, but keep going into Kerry. All right, so what you do if we do that. We thank you for telling us that I put the wrong minutes in, so we have a motion to approve the minutes for the regular City of Ocean Shore Planning Commission meeting on August 2nd, 2023. Motion by Mark, seconded by Kerry, all in favor? All right. We start discussion. If you weren't listening or attending the City Council meeting, the law clearing work we did back on March may come back to us. Kerry and I participated in an ad hoc. In the course of the ad hoc, it maybe got muddied a little bit. So it may come back to us to rework and tweak and do some depth defining. And just when it comes back, we'll let you know.
They didn't like it.
No, they just got confused. That's all. It wasn't a question of liking, but they started asking questions about law of the law ground hall and permeability and all those things that we beat a bunch of times.
Yeah.
And then got a little confused when we went from there. So if we send it back, we'll send it back with very clear, this is what this code does. It does trees. And it doesn't do appearance, and it doesn't do permeability issues, SWPP. With a note that says, if you would like us to do appearance, tell us, make a motion, and we'll look at it. If you would like SWPP, it's a different ballgame, that's why I talked to Martin. Because as you know, it will mean the Martianite team, Western Washington, so. So our preventive program has the potential of providing additional costs to homeowners. It has the potential of providing additional costs to the city to review home owners' designs of alternative treatment at their site. So when we came back, we'll basically say what this does and doesn't do. It does trees. That's what we thought you wanted us to do. And it doesn't do these other two issues. If you want to do appearance, but I was told that we can beat that one again. Similar to like the protect standard, right? That's the analogy. I would put anything that's sort of an appearance, if they want. We'll see. We've got to come back to some tweaking and clarification. Possibly, that's the old business. Remind that we're going to use Robert's rules. And Dan is going to go back and look at Robert's rules for us, and we may need to make a minor amendment because Dan said that Robert's rule said that the commissioner chair should not lead discussions, so we'll have to figure out maybe changing our local best to allow me to lead some discussion.
I think we can put down the handbook.
There was probably a handbook, we're all set. But we may have to vote on the internal members for the handbook, just to cover ourselves, just at the words.
I didn't know that you couldn't lead it. There's a thing in there about voting. There's a thing about voting, it says you can't vote.
Right.
We put it in the handbook, if you can vote, you just got to vote last.
Okay.
There's also a thing in there about.
Leading discussion.
Leading discussion, it says, if you're going to lead, if you want to participate in the discussion, even, you've got to pass your chair to the vice chair.
Who can offer husband?
And then we took that out there also, because we've always done that. But in the past, the chairs don't lead conversations.
So we just need to look at that, see if we want to change our handbook. If everybody's okay with changing it, for me to be able to lead discussion.
So there's a point behind all that.
It's Robert's rules, since they've been around for how long have our purpose been?
A long time.
Three days in the US, I think.
I think you did.
Just, and that's the point, was when our understanding may be a little bit off, but the old raise your hand and be recognized, we're going to continue to try to do that as best we can. Very quickly on the first two items, page five. I don't know if we've got any update for this. I made all the changes we've talked about, which is purpose and guiding principles. We really haven't seen anything to add.
Did you do public comment?
Oh, I'm sorry, did I skip public? Right there. There, God bless you, a little heart. So we have public comments beginning and the end, and I promise not to forget at the end. Do we have any public comments at the beginning? Go ahead.
Don Williams, I have a couple of these. First of all, I usually watch on Zoom before I compete, but it's nice to be here. When I saw your note here about zoning, that's on page five, simplified zoning. I want to ask about pyramid zoning, and I know one of your tasks is to realign the zoning, and there's a chart here you're going to talk about today, I think the zoning code perfect. The proposed zone. I guess my question is, I, it hasn't happened to me, but I've had friends that have feel they've been victimized by pyramid zoning. So I, and obviously they should have known better, but they didn't. And now they have something in the neighborhood they don't want, they didn't really ever expect to have in a residential neighborhood. So my question is, is the planning commission going to ever look at that pyramid zoning? Is that in the cards here? Because I see the zone being defined here, but nothing about the pyramid. And so that's my first question. The second question is, is that I purchased the zoning map years ago, it's a side kitchen table, okay? And my question is, is this occurring, is this map being kept up to date? I was, with Mark, who would have been here. I must have bought it, I must have bought it ten years ago. I don't even know when this dated, but is this map being kept up to date? And it's all, I'll get another one, but is it being kept up to date? I kind of wonder. My third thing is, is you mentioned the planning handbook. Is the handbook that's on the website on City, is that the current handbook? Are you modifying it further? I mean, obviously, it's dynamic, but the one on there is the latest and greatest handbook that's on the web right now. Okay, all right, well, those are my comments. Thank you. Like to hear about pyramid zoning, what their plans are later, anyway, wanted to talk about it.
Good, thanks, Thor. I'm not supposed to hear that. Yes, on the map, up to date, the one up there is.
Okay.
Good. Yes, on the handbook, because it's got our names in it, so that's how you know it's current. And pyramid zoning is a long-term effort. We'll talk about those are the three. That's all, that's all I really need to say. What? And Vita, anything before we start? Thank you.
Hi, Gary. No, I don't have any comments. Don pretty much covered it all on the pyramid zoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Vita.
Is it possible to ask a response for clarification on this pyramid zoning?
We can do a discussion. Go ahead, please, start your discussion.
Don, you mentioned that a neighbor felt victimized by.
Yeah.
What does that mean?
Well, they were in a, uh, New York Gutterston Avenue, that's long-term, and that area has become 100% residential, okay? But R1, I think it's like R2 or 3, and I'd say maybe last year, a proposal came in to put a triplex across them, which I guess it was okay. And then it was going to become condominiums, and so they were, they were upset because they, they, they thought they were in a residential zone, they've been there for 30 years. And they find out that it's something different, and they should have known better, but they didn't. And I know I have the same case with that in my area, but it's not affected me yet.
That's, that particular one was in R4 next to an R1.
Yeah, they, my friend lived across the street, and I think one lot down.
There's a little piece of R4.
Yes.
And that was, that was.
Okay.
That's it. That was a pyramid zoning, that was clearly to intend the purpose.
Okay, all right, okay.
So pyramid zoning, we are, we'll talk about that. The biggest issue we've had in pyramid zoning in this town is more residential and business district. And that's what, we haven't hit the business district yet. When we get to the business districts and the commercial districts, we're going to have some really hard discussions about pyramid zoning, and that's what we're looking at. And we don't say it directly as a guiding principle, but it's kind of woven throughout. So we'll try that. So the next item is the challenges. Anybody have a comment to change that? I don't really think we want to. Then unless, hey, Thor, you talked off on, though, would you recommend we add a challenge of restrictive parking?
Well, it's something to certainly consider, because we have parking rules. Pretty traditional, I think in the, in the favor, require parking for the worst possible situation, rather than the average typical situation. For example, our business requires, and we're going to think about 24 parking. Yeah, we have that. Page four, but it's required in such a way to God forbid, everybody came to work at the same time and had visitors.
But I think the reason this is wrong through to me, we talked before, Thor, was, is one of the things we're looking at is these low-level commercial in these residential mix. So is there any thoughts about maybe, we haven't talked to the parking code yet, but addressing that, particularly in light of, we're looking for maybe some bodega sandwich shop in the newer residential midst, saying that a challenge may be parking rules potentially restricting commercial. Go ahead, Mark.
I think that makes sense to at least address it as a challenge, because as we talked before in this forum, there's no on-street parking.
In the city, right.
So, right, so where do you park? And so as we have opportunities for growth, or whatever, where are they going to park, and should we address it so that it's?
And we're not in that piece of code yet, but when I put it as a challenge, we don't forget it.
Right.
I also think it shows completeness of review. Right, so when this does go to council, they, they know that it was in our minds that we knew that this was an issue and a challenge for us to come up with.
An objection to adding that thing as a challenge? I don't think so. But we're very careful, because there is no off-street parking in this city anyway.
Discuss it in terms of freeing up commercial space.
That's the whole thing, yeah, absolutely.
And residential too, if you have much more incentive growing units.
I think all of that, I think, and as you said, it's an old 60s, 70s parking code, and modern code has really evolved less to allow you to make assumptions about, like in your case, you don't need 12 brokers and 12 visitors all at the same time. Because the odds of that are extremely low. Almost zero.
Pretty much, yeah, and most businesses are the same way.
I mean, I'm okay without that as a challenge, I think it's an opportunity to look at it. All right, the next agenda item is where we are working through. That's on page seven. We've done residential low-density, single-family. And I think we voted on that one, right?
Yeah, I know we did.
And I don't know, I really wish I did. So we also voted on low-density residential mixed use. And right now, again, that's only showed up one place in town so far in our thoughts on the map, but there's opportunities as we go forward to consider that. Today, I hope to get through medium-density residential and medium-density residential mixed use. That's the goal today in the home. And what I've done over here is talk about what are sort of the changes on the table on the right. So medium-density residential pulls together R2, R3, and R4. Medium-density residential mixed use pulls together the same four. And here's the peer, addition of transient lodging as a permitted use, and addition of light commercial as a permitted use. And again, we would only consider putting this geographically where it would make sense and buffer from single-family residential as much as possible. I think those are what we've agreed to, as we look at doing these sort of things. And I've added, and we're going to talk about this hopefully today, you know, short a meeting, high-density residential mixed use. Because I cannot, looking at the map, come up where anywhere we would have a high-density residential without mixed use. That's kind of why I said we may not need a high-density residential plane. Because we could do it, and we're getting very good at this, just add or change. But I think right now, looking at the back of the walk-around we've all done, we haven't really seen a need for that yet. So that's kind of where we're at. Any discussion on that?
Yeah.
Right. Well, the next topic, and it will be hopefully a vote, even if we have amendments we want to do. This all looks like new code, because it is. It's all in italics, and it would be read in a document change. But I will walk through this. The purpose is the exact same as the one we voted on and approved. All right. We added, after protection property values, it allows for transient rentals, and we added light commercial activities are committed only as a conditional use. Which requires condition use permit during examiner, public notice, and all that sort of stuff. And it is the intent, I believe, to make a recommendation at this point, in these limited numbers of RLs mixed use, to make transient rentals unallowable and not a, not a conditional use. Because we talked about that length, what we all as a group, so it came to consensus that a permitted versus conditional. All right. So permitted uses, single families, manufactured home occupation, camping, non-accessory structures, accessory structures. Transient rentals. And we know that code hasn't gotten in there. And the conditional uses are, we talked about public assembly public, that's in every district. And then light commercial activities that do not detract from the primary residential character of the neighborhood, such uses may include grocery and convenience stores, cafes, sandwich shops, and coffee shops. When such light commercial activities are allowed, off-street parking subject to 1754 shall be provided, and so it would be 1754 we'd be looking at. Do we have any discussion over that? No. Go ahead.
If it doesn't mean geographical areas or?
Not yet, we're going to maybe do that at the end of the day today. But in general form, what we were looking at was, what we said it wasn't going to be was the famous horseshoe between Razorclam and Wyman Ochi. That's all currently R3, it's got almost all single-family home. We said that is better kept as a pure residential town. But there are some other R3s, R4s, R2s, which may allow one to look at opening it up for transient rental and light commercial. But we haven't yet looked at them out. Actually, there's a couple spots we looked at. The, I think there's some R3 off of motion spray, where it would make sense. Mix in, wait, we'll all big that. There's a few R3s and R4s where it might make sense, but for now, we're just sort of defining it, and then with the intent to, you know, as much as we can buffer it from pure residential. Everything else is the exact same. Oh, no. No density rate this young. Oh, this is, no, we're actually voting on low-density, okay, so this is right, this is low-density single-family. So this is all the same, the one we've already approved. So the only thing really left is what we changed. Conditions. So I guess the question is, do we think we're ready to go to a motion to approve the recommended changes to codes to do the residential low-mixed use area? You know, if we're ready to vote on that?
I can most forward. Well, I can do the conversation before or after, but it's almost a little premature to do it before we designate the area.
Well, this one we actually did. You weren't here. Well, I can show you right now, if you want to see where we looked at it. Yeah, the only spot we had, actually, let's throw them out. We can do that. It's the other one. The one that was on our market will not. The only place that has come up so far, because this, what is the concept plan is we don't have bars. We said that band over here, which is highly, there's only like six houses in that whole world. That's the only part we said so far where it makes sense.
Okay.
Right? And the other thing we talked about is this. What I talked about, RM, when we get there. And this is a potential RM mixed, because right now, there's all sorts of stuff in there.
I agree.
So that's kind of where we're at. Just so you know. No, and then we talked about this one too. This is RM.
We'd have to fight around with these two.
We'll talk about that today, yeah. Should they be RM mixed or RM pure? So that's a great point. I mean, I'm glad you weren't here during that person talking. Because we're really looking at going with what the concept plan, making that in town for the resort for sure. All right, so anybody want to make a motion? Our motion, Kerry? All in favor? Oh, we've got another one to find. Click it off. All right, next one is the RM zone meeting doesn't do residential. I bet we basically took the old R2 language, did the old strikeout in addition. In the purpose, we added the words while providing affordable housing in the community, because what we talked about was lots, something, we didn't have smaller lots and that's the question. Permitted uses are RLs, so. Yeah, so this is sort of a residual of residential pyramid zoning. I hate using that word because it's so negative. But basically, the fact of the matter is, when you look at the R2s, R3s, R4s, there are lots and lots of single-family homes. There are like 80% single-family homes in them right now. We talked at length about, did we want to carve something out that would only ever be high-density? And at this point, I believe, and I'm just restating what we stated for everybody who hasn't sat through this, is the thought was, it really isn't, we haven't seen the demand for high-density only. There is a demand that somebody will put a triplex, but not row after row after row after row of triplex, except, you know, when it may come to that area out there, um, buying dolphin, in those areas, whatever the street that is. Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So there is, maybe when we get up and look at the area, we'll find something, but as of now, we haven't had something to create a zone that says you can't build single-family homes. Yeah, so that's kind of where we're at. But that may change as we go through and look at it. We haven't walked that end of town yet. We'll talk about that. So what we brought was, we brought in the row house and other common wall residential developments for the underlying is subdivided law ownership of the individual lots and homes, that's the common wall provision, that believe it or not, wasn't in R2. Was only in R3, R4 in the past, so that's a fix. Prohibited is homeless. And all uses the standard then. So for the density regulation, we said one dwelling structure for established recorded law according to the plots existing as of August 2003, or as legally created under the provision of the shore plat and subdivision requirements. So what that means is you can subdivide and then build the structures in accordance with this table. So what we said is, if you want to do a three and four family, 7,200 square feet, that allows light, keeps with a purpose. You can do a duplex on a lot divided in half, and you can do a single-family on a quarter. Page 13 now, we just got to 13, that's the table. That's the table we worked on. Well, I think I captured everything.
Yeah, I think that sums up exactly the discussion that we had.
Did you remember that? I think that was, did we do that? No, what you did, we're at this one. This is what we talked about, because I remember you talking about this subdividing laws.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Okay, all right, so do do we have a motion to approve the RM zone, medium-density residential recommendation? Mark has moved.
Thanks, keep it easy.
All in favor? So this gets even, it's going to be, we're going to do 20 zones in one day. But we beat them around for about three years.
It either beat them around or it beat us around, I'm not sure where.
All right, so the residential, the RMM zone, medium-density residential mixed fuse. I see a typo. Under the purpose, I've got a capital C in there that doesn't belong. So we'll say as amended when we vote, okay? And you'll notice that the affordable housing was in the old R3, which is interesting. So we did that. So single-family, which is the RL users, two families, three families, four families, and we added transient rentals. And when we just looked at that, there may be some opportunities for transient rentals in, like that area in Port Brown, that's already buffered in the back. Yeah, that's sort of what we talked about. And then under conditional uses, we've got the same light commercial wording, so we're all in agreement on that. And then we added the row house and common wall subdivision. Density regulation was saying any other discussion we need to have on the RMM zone. Go ahead.
I don't see any, I don't see a provision here for detached dwellings that are non-common wall.
Well, that was under 17, 1805, all the top of 15. That's what Marshall, so top of page 15. And I'm going to walk through this. Basically, it allows for a dwelling structure according to plots existing as of, without defining, it could be a one, two, or three family dwelling structure.
That's be one building.
So you can subdivide the plot into four single-family structure.
Would they have to be detached or attached?
Detached. Well, structure, no common wall subdivision.
Can you use structure instead of structure?
No, because it's one structure per platted lot. So if you wanted to take an existing 7,200 and build four single, like the Calmery did, you would have to go through the county and do the subdivision and the replating. And at that point, you've got four 1,800 square foot lots, each that can have a detached building. That's what Marshall had talked to us about this week.
And that applies also to the previous.
Absolutely, yeah. That was the way that we were looking at getting smaller homes and smaller lots in an appropriate area. Everybody, so that clarified up here?
Yeah.
Everybody good? You were going to do it by condominium without doing a.
Yeah, you don't have to do the replating if you condominiums. But this gives you an option to do without condominiums. Like Calmery and Dillon folks have done. So you have the option to do it this way with true. But again, you're going to have to go through things like. That's what, but no, it's still going to go through easements for entryways, because you know, there's lots that are going to come in by ways of all this sort of stuff. Well, that's all for the developer. What this does allow for smaller, what we've said is, we're going to go back and look at the square footage table in light of this. Yeah, so that's going to all sort of play together when we get there. All right, so do we have a motion? To approve, all in favor? Now, the hardest one of the day. Actually, no, it's not that hard. So we're getting rid of all 17, 222, just door pages 16 and 17. I just ran the code in complete, Sarah's going to love me because I know what we're changing and everything else. And now 17, 24, which was the old R5, would become the high-mix. And now seventeen two four, which was the old R five, would become the high mix. See a lot of similar. And we're not even close to ready to finalizing this, so. And this may be worth. Well, I think it's worth discussing is. The. High density without mixed use. And maybe it's a, a, a map look, but the really only high density we've seen is the old never built golf course. And there's nothing in there that would present, prevent mixed use. In our term of mixed use isn't. Like most, it's transit rentals and like commercial.
Right.
And Ocean Shore is appropriate, Ocean Shore is appropriate mixed use. Um, there are a couple of other areas that I found intriguing as I was looking at the map the other night where. Uh, maybe a mixed use would make sense in high density, but. I think what we, what I'd like to do is, is take a quick look at the map because Dan wasn't here. And then sort of go through some of the areas we haven't looked at briefly. So I wish well there, I haven't done that. So, well, we're looking at here. Wow, high density right now. This currently is, I want to first look at the ocean spray area. The ocean spray area appeared to be R seven? Does that make sense to you, Warren?
Yeah.
In R nine, yeah. So just to have the discussion. This would all become, unless we say this is residential high. No mix, and this is residential high mix, I just bring it up. The other areas, this whole ocean spray area. The reason we thought. This might work for mixed. Was because it had this buffer. Uh, medium that we would probably make medium non-mixed. Is it all medium mixed either way, because you're across, across the street from each, but that's kind of one of the box work. We haven't, we want to circle around, we haven't labeled it yet. Uh, this we want to save as a commercial. Why? Sue?
Big one, yeah.
That's our law.
In hopes, in hopes.
Um, and then these two, we gotta figure out what to do. And these, this is R four. So these are gonna be RM. The question is. The question is, are we gonna rent this across the street? It's one of the duplexes in town. Question across the street is, do we want to make these mixed or not? And I'm not, we can have that discussion later. That is the highs, which start at Dark Brown, right? Yep. So is there? Highs that we don't want mixed. Use, and then we said RM, that may be RH, but we'll see. I gotta go back and look again, it's been so long. But, I mean. We would. Basically, there's a lot of these R fives. These Browns, the famous Gunderson corner was R five. Everybody's got upset about that's always been R five, and everybody built houses in their R five. So then you got these little, well, this is. Yeah, so you got these in here. So there's always. We're looking at all of this, but I'm looking at the high density. So down here is modified global home, so this is all. So this lends me to think, just talk this out, talk me through this, maybe we do need a high. Non-mixed.
Non-mixed to go with the mixed.
Yeah.
Only because.
Sure.
This is very appropriate for.
Yeah. I would agree.
High without mixed use.
I would think non-mixed, mixed.
Maybe that, and this one. Maybe non-mixed, because this all would become mixed. Cause that's where the old, right, some shop and everything. So I, doing this makes me think we probably want to do a high. Take these old R fives. A high density, no commercial, no transit. I think so.
Especially for this area here.
Without, you didn't even know that was there, did you? Yeah, it's crazy.
The only problem along the canals there is it may require substantial improvements for.
Absolutely, commercial activities in the, in the, in the shoreline buffer. And that's, but this is what I would point that to make it RM no mesh. That little toe.
Yeah.
But this one, it's R four, so this will, we've got all this RM. It'd be nice to have a little cornerstone there, that's just me. But you have it all, you have two other on the papers. Okay, I just wanted to get an idea of if there was ever a reason. And then we gotta figure all this out.
Yeah, we do.
But really, a shorter meeting today, um. What I sort of wanted was just the consensus that we want to do a residential high. With no commercial and a residential high. And so we sort of have consensus, it's a good idea to do that. I think we do. So what I would propose that is, if nobody has objections, is we do have that shorter meeting today. Let me find that out. Um, next meeting, we may have made. Made, we have a block there because he hasn't kicked back since yet.
I don't think, I don't know that it'll go back. I really don't think it'll come back.
I do. I have, I have a different solution. I'll talk to you about that. And, um. Yeah, so, and then at the next meeting, really look at the map and starting, try to line out the rest of the town for these, because we have some harder. Where hardest to make on what to recommend, on what to vote where. You okay with all that, Thor?
Yes.
I mean, it's short meeting today, but I wasn't expecting it to sail through, and we got three done.
Yes. I'm thinking whether. Mixed use. Values of commercial will. Be, will outweigh their residential. Ability. Down the point, considering mixed use. Residential something they hear the thing. Are, is it more, is it more valuable as residential or more valuable as? Commercial. A, a particular lot.
I don't know.
What, what is exactly? I'm guessing it needs more valuable as residential, at least momentarily. At least at the time of development, there's some sort of project going on there. And which would probably. Uh, negate the, uh. Zoning we have there, but the residential area just by, just by fiat. Whereas, would it be wise to dedicate a particular area? For, for like commercial or, or just.
And I'll start in the, very well, but I think though, because it's. Residential mix. If the value is residential, it still gets sold when builders are residential lot. That's what I think it's. Well, ah, and I think the feeling that we have been up for on the room is what's gonna happen is, we're gonna, if we get a single commercial use. It would be great. But the one thing we will get is. Um, I've stated luckily, it was not in trouble. Is the opportunity for council to approve the expansion of areas you're waiting to transit rentals. In an appropriate area, then a buffer from other residential, isn't that correct?
Yeah.
And what that will do is take some of the pressure off the existing B two, B ones. That have been drowned and transit rentals. That's sort of, I shouldn't say that again, to bring that up. So it's trade or rent, yeah, basically. That's sort of the thought, is it, it is, it's as much as. Carefully expanding where allowable, transit rentals are allowed, carefully expanding that. To take the pressure off the B twos.
Sure.
And then the benefit would be if we could get a light commercial on top of that. But I think just as important, this whole drill is protecting the unspoiled commercial areas, and that may be a. A, a lot by lot down in the mess area, on the other end of Point Brown, where we may have to go down and take any lot that is, is commercial. And. Or is not yet developed in its commercial zone and protect that as a commercial or adventure. That's the real hard part. That kind of gets to your point, though, I had to say, that's really, that's really what we're getting to, is we're desperate to find places. That are commercial, that aren't getting consumed by residential, trans, trans rental development. Go ahead, Mark, please.
No, no, because again, the whole idea is to provide that opportunity, whether it ever happens. Right now, though, it can't, given the, the way that we're structured. So if we provide the opportunity, then. Developers can come in and say, oh, here's an opportunity. That wasn't there before, so I, I think we need to, you know, consider what opportunities we can bring. And it's not twenty twenty-three, but. Sometime in the future.
Again, all of this is in keeping with the approved concept plan. Cause that was a goal of the concept, that as we're opportunizing small lot sizes, so all of this. Is tracking with what the concept plan said that we wanted to do with the code.
Exactly.
Alright, so anything else around the room, anything to report?
Uh, just our walking and biking. Uh, we had, uh, what I would term as very successful first meeting. We had over forty people staying in a standing room only, um, for our, uh, walking and biking enhancements. Uh, that all went really well. We came up with twenty-one. Ideas to go onward, uh, forward with. And our next meeting is September twenty-sixth. Here at the library at six P M.
And really good meeting. I thought it was a good meeting. The one thing that didn't get addressed, and I don't know how it's gonna overdo it. Well, we did, and I'm figuring, and I'll tell you what, we didn't really get into that. Well. In the details of the inner and outer loop. Plan. That would add stop signs and maybe speed control.
Cause like I was coming to here today, here's a guy on a bicycle right down the middle of the.
And that's, that's kind of the whole idea of the inner and outer loop, and that you go. That one little spot, Captain Ray and Oyster.
Yeah, I used to have an overhurt, and I took the back road. I didn't go down that like driving. That's a healthy choice.
And that's, we're getting there, and what we're gonna have to do, Mark, becoming all candidates. The idea for the next meeting, talking with the mayor and some other folks, and so. Summarize what we think we've heard on the twenty-one initiative, get new initiatives. Um, and then from there, we're probably gonna have to do like. Two or three sentence summaries on all. Whatever number we have.
Yes.
And then figure out a way to get a vote. And I kind of like what the parks board did, they put it up here. And we'll do different from then, though, you have to initial the dot. Cause we found that was a problem in our blue zone.
You dare.
So you get a dot, but we're gonna ask you to initial the dot, and don't forge somebody else's initial for your favorite project, so. I mean, a lot of good ones came up. I mean, I never thought of it, you know, crossings on Ocean Shore Boulevard that the beach approaches. I don't cross that way, but people said it's scary to try to cross on Forest Pacific and Ocean Lake. That's an easy one.
Yeah.
Um, I think, you know, saw that one. Lot of involvement, a lot of ideas. Any else to report on the ad hoc?
Ad hoc meeting, well. I actually think overall, for what purpose was we were trying to accomplish, it went well. I was happy with what we came up with, but you're correct, it doesn't address what it is not doing.
Yeah.
And I think that is a good point of clarification for it to be there.
Yeah, and there'll be some discussion with. Me, the old ad hoc. The mayor from town. And the mayor on how to go forward. Cause I have a bunch of. And actually, what you guys wrote was, it's good, it really was, it was just not properly understood. And we'll talk about that.
Yeah.
But they did clean up some stuff. There are some, there, there are some wills that should be shall. Well, that one didn't, Jay, I think we had the wills and shells right in Lockwood.
Yes.
The other, no, we had one wrong though. We had a may.
Yeah, and, and, and in the lock player or the, the other, the other one had three.
Yeah, those are all ones. That's very long peg, but yeah, that one only had one mistake of shall versus will. Or may, shall versus may. So other than that, we're, I think we're in. We're very close on that. We'll figure out how to get it out. Um, the only other thing I have to report. Is the skate park ramp, it's only got a couple of days left. Small group, like me and two other guys in Alphamish about. This is not something that big crowds own, but. If you didn't, if you didn't listen to the city council meeting, Eric summarized it great, and Jane was there and some other folks were there, uh. On Labor Day, we had thirty plus people show up. All lots alive, all ages, um, all politicals, two, our candidates running against each other. All holding the same horn, um, and it was really a great community event, one of the greatest, best community events I've ever seen here. Cause everybody showed up and just pitched in. It was controlled chaos. I was lucky because the day before, Paul Winchester and. Um, Kristen and Ed Schroll were with me, and we did all the prep work. Um, so we're ready for the frenzy, but it was a great community event, it really was. The Park Foundation brought pizza and donuts and. Just a lot of fun, so very much appreciate. Did it, now the hard part, finishing. Um, we'll, we'll be there at nine o'clock tomorrow morning, for a little bit, and go from there. The other thing is Blue Zone was contacted me, they get you too?
They did not.
Okay, so I have one follow up. The finalizing, 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 okay? I, I got it, I'll go. So if they didn't invite you, they're probably trying to go one representative per community.
Okay.
And I'll do that, so. And everything else, I've become the Ocean Shore Blue Zones. We'll talk about that too. I don't know if that happened. Um, cause I got enough going up here. But, uh, that I, that, the only thing they had on that was way, um, wayfinding signs, which is fine. That's great. If they want to tell us how to get to the item trail, and they want paper signs for their money to, this way to the item trail, I'll do that all day long. So that's where we're at with it.
Well, at, at our last meeting, signs was pretty much across the board in each community that is there, so. There is a, a way to put that together, I think.
We'll see. Alright, anything else? Well, we got one more public comment. Any public comment? I'm gonna go online first, because we haven't figured out how to do this council meeting. Vida, do you have anything?
No, Gary, thank you very much.
Thank you for being here. In the road?
Yeah.
Yeah, the state park, that, that was great. Enjoyed doing it, and if you need help tomorrow, we got you, it's been after. Meeting or two, but no, and so everybody knows Jerry, he just volunteers in marriage. Jerry's been out there, and it, it takes a lot to win a crew of volunteers all the time. And so I give him kudos there. Um, you've got different personalities. Um, as far as I, I had talked to Mark and with walking and biking, there is a, a community member. Who had done a bunch of research on the speed cushions and stuff, and I, I'll try and get, make sure to get that information to you guys, because. As we addressed with the roads like. Canal Drive, all of that. I can't get off the road, there's no shoulders, there's ditch, and even if you get personally off the road, that little one foot. It's full of sand spurs and. Can't take my dog in it. So, um, there, there was, she did extensive research in it, so, uh, I talked her about. Providing you guys with that information as, as an alternative for areas like that, that we really don't have any options.
So I would, I would say get that to Mark and I, and bring it up, then maybe I have a twenty-two speed cushion. And this is all to be considered.
Right.
So, and we'll go over there.
I was gonna say, I go by the, uh, Junok Park today, and they're trenching in the tour line. It looks like they got a big, big trench all the way out of the street. So that's, I guess we're gonna have a bathroom there. The city people there, I don't know who else is there, but a lot, a lot of city trucks are there.
Definitely, it's going, good news. Anything else? Uh, let me think, let me go back to the family, let's see. Uh, Larry, did you want to say anything if they're a non-voting member?
Nope, nope, I'm good. I'm just kind of soaking everything in.
Alright, Larry, I know it's much harder over Zoom, but we really appreciate you getting us a shot during your vacation. Thanks, man.
No problem. I know, it, this is actually kind of a nice break in. I wish I was there, but, um, but yeah, this is at least a good way of, uh, understanding how everything works.
Great, thanks, Larry. Alrighty, the next meeting is, uh, August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three at two P M, and the next secretary is Ms. Barf. When's the next meeting?
Uh, the next meeting, the next meeting would be September twenty-sixth.
Yeah, yeah. September twenty-sixth, Eric and I both got. Month out. The next meeting is September twenty-sixth, here at two P M, and Mark and I have two meetings that day.
Yes, we do, back to that.